Okay, Madam Mayor, we are live.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome to the regular Montrose City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, August 18th at 6:00 PM. And we will start our city council meeting with the Budge of Allegiance.
I grant the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republik which stands on one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask the city clerk to take role.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
All city council members are present.
Great, thank you. Mayor Carson Glassell, are there any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
No, that all four of them.
Great, thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda tonight for business is the 19th Amendment Day proclamation. And it's my honor to read this proclamation. I'm going to be joined by our guests and our city clerk up here. Hi, how are you guys? Good to do. Oh, good. Hey, all got our masks on, that's good. 19th Amendment Day, August 26, 2020. The 100th anniversary of certification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas, the United States celebrates on August 26, 2020, the 100th anniversary of the certification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which states, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." And, whereas, it was the culmination of a 72-year struggle by suffragists to gain the recognition that women are equally qualified to vote and participate in the shaping of the direction of their country. And, whereas, the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the goal to help the 20 million women who were guaranteed the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibility as voters. And, whereas, by their accomplishments over the last 100 years, women have proven their commitment for equality under the law for all Americans through their efforts to ensure that freedom, liberty, and access to voting are the mainstays of our democracy. And, whereas, like the suffragists of the past, today's women, through their resolve, innovation, leadership, passion, continue to inspire future generations of women working to bring this nation closer to its founding promise of full fairness and equality for all. And whereas, their efforts have strengthened our economy, our communities, and our families, and enriched the American spirit. And whereas, voting rights continue to be threatened, we must continue to protect and expand voting rights for all US citizens. And, whereas, we commemorate women's remarkable achievements inspired by the fight for and passage of the 19th Amendment and celebrate their commitment to inspire the women of the future. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim August 26, 2020, as 19th Amendment Day in the City of Montrose, Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, boys, for coming tonight. This is really important. It's something I'm issue I care a lot about and know what you guys do. Our city clerk ensures that our elections happen smoothly on behalf of our city. So I wanted to invite her to join us as well because this is her job, to ensure voting for all of our community. So thank you very much for joining me.
I wanted to say too how interesting that it was actually ratified by 36th May, which was Tennessee, on August 18th.
That's great. That's great. There's no more appropriate time to do that.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll see what I can think of here.
Okay, next on our agenda tonight is the call for public comment. This is the time during our meeting where if folks want to tell us what's on their mind, something that is not on our formal agenda, this is the opportunity. If we have anyone, then I'll read more information.
I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, doesn't look like we're having one for public comment tonight. But we do invite you, if there's something on your mind and you want to address city council during our public meetings, that's always an option, as is reaching us by email or picking up the phone and giving us a phone call. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda tonight is, I have seven approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of the August 4, 2020, regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 4, 2020, regular city council meeting. I'll second that.
Okay, great. Do you want to call the vote?
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
I think that was an aye?
It was an aye.
Yeah, there was a, an aye, yes.
Dave Bowman? Aye. Dave Frank?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is item eight, the Planning Commission Appointment. City Council consideration of the appointment of Bibi Benziger to the City of Montrose Planning Commission for a term that begins immediately and ends on December 31st, 2020. Council have the opportunity to meet and interview Bibi Benziger at our work session prior to yesterday. And does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bibi Benziger to the City of Montrose Planning Commission for a term that begins immediately and ends on December 31st, 2020.
I'd like to second it.
Great, we have a first and a second. And the clarification, if you're following along at home, is that she is filling a vacancy and that's why the term is so short because it goes to the end of the original term, at which point she could apply again. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to please call for a vote?
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, item, item nine, Montrose Bucks Program Funding. This is council consideration of additional funding in the amount of $10,000 for the 2020 Montrose Bucks Program. I will turn it over to the Director of Business Innovation and Tourism, Chelsea Rastie, for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. I appreciate you having me here tonight to discuss this exciting program. I'm gonna just get my screen here really quickly. All right, so this will be the second time we've talked about this. First in the work session and then tonight. And so I'll keep the presentation as brief as possible, but be sure to hit the high points of what we're wanting to talk to you about this evening. So traditionally speaking, the City of Montrose has offered a, what was a long time ago called Mama Bucks and has more recently been called Montrose Bucks. And so these have been paper checks that we put out into the community that are made out to any Montrose merchant. And in the season of Thanksgiving or usually Black Friday, we'll run a promotion where the community can come and purchase $120 worth of Montrose Bucks for just $100. So fast forward to today, we've advanced our program into a digital bucks program. And so now you can use Montrose Bucks just like any debit or credit card. It's a little card that you can pick up at the visitor's center or online at cityofmontrose.org/bucks. And so we're here tonight to talk about starting the bucks promotion a little bit early. And then also changing just the way that it's structured a little bit. So there's a video within this presentation that's included in the packet. We're not going to go through that tonight, but the video talks about the new program, how it works, and how you can participate in it. Then we'll talk about the request, why we want to do this, and what we expect to be the outcome. So the idea would be that beginning immediately is, if you were to approve this this evening, we would propose a buy 50, get 60 promotion for Montrose Bucks. And so this makes it a little bit more of an approachable promotion where people aren't having to spend $100, but they only have to spend 50 to be able to participate from now until the end of the year. And the bucks would be available to purchase in the visitor's center and online. We're also proposing $25,000 in promotional dollars. And so typically, we budget $15,000. And so the ask this evening would be for an additional $10,000 to budget for this promotion. So what might happen to the Black Friday promotion? Well, instead of just starting it on that Black Friday and carrying it to the end of the year, we'll just start it now or whenever you are to consider approving it, and we'll run it through the end of the year. So we won't have both, we'll just have this and get it going early. So why do we want to do this? What are we, what have we been thinking about and what's been, you know, giving us these ideas? So if we were to put $25,000 of promotional money into our economy, that would equate to $150,000 in total spending within the local economy. We mentioned that the extra $600 of unemployment benefits that those who are unemployed have been receiving ran out on July 29th. And so the timing is good, A, to maybe help those people a little bit, put a little extra cash in their pocket, and B, continue to stimulate the economy here locally with those extra dollars coming into our retailers. And then the final reason why we feel this is really good timing for this is to grow awareness of our new digital bucks program so that we can get this business participation because the businesses all have to sign up in order to accept the digital bucks. And we've been working really diligently. We've got a lot of businesses on Main Street. Most of our large box retailers to the south are signed up. But this program, as we continue to roll it out, will help grow awareness of the program. And the beautiful part is that all the money will stay local. So of course, we love that about this program and that's the main reason why we do it. So again, $15,000 is in the current year budget for this program. $10,000 of remaining funds from the loan program that we could use or another fund of your choosing. And that concludes the presentation.
I have a question. So if that, if that money is used up, the bucks would be available for sale, but there'd no longer be that extra bonus for purchasing a bucks gift card, is that correct?
Yes, so you can buy bucks anytime of year very easily now. And we love this new program because now you can sort of buy a gift card to Montrose at any time at the visitor's center or online. So, yes.
So that bonus is kind of while supplies last, there's a bonus?
That's right.
How will people know what businesses are taking these and what businesses aren't? And what's, I assume you're gonna have to update this on some kind of regular basis? How's that gonna happen?
We will provide a list both online and in person or along with the gift card, if we mail the gift card, if they've purchased it online so that they know the most current and up-to-date list. Our DART and Guest Services Coordinator Kate Adams has been doing an excellent job of keeping track of that. But all these be available online. And then we have window clings that we've put together. You can see an example on the front door of the visitor's center. If you walk in that way, it says bucks sold here. And so the businesses' clings will say bucks accepted here. And you'll see it's a little turquoise circle cling for the windows.
Thank you.
If I could just add, Madam Mayor, I think, I just pulled it up. It's already on the website, the participating businesses and then how a business can register to participate. And I know that they've been updating that, but I just wanted to clarify it's already there. And we'll just be adding to it.
Thank you.
And I think Counselor Anderson had a question too.
Thank, thank you. So Chelsea, if, this is like a debit card, right? So let's say I spend $100, my debit card's worth 120, I guess. Can I use that in multiple places? I don't have to use it all at one store as a, and I could use it over time for different purchases until it runs down to zero?
That's absolutely right. And so the one thing you'll want to remember, and we'll try to tell people as they get their cards, is the balance gets lower, then you may have to prepay at a place like a gas pump because you'll have, it'll just be a limited amount. So you can check your balance online and you'll know, okay, I've got $20. So you can just go tell the clerk, I'd like to put $20 on pump number four. So that becomes a little bit less convenient. But yes, you can absolutely use it anywhere that debit and credit cards are accepted and bucks are accepted.
I think that's just exactly like a Visa gift card. I think they work the same way. That's very cool. Thanks.
Great program. And it's nice to see it kind of brought up with the technology to carry a card in your wallet instead of those paper checks, which I found easy to lose. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Oh, wait, I got a public comment. Sorry. My mistake.
Right.
Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment?
I am not seeing anyone.
Any additional staff comments to, did you, okay. Okay, my apologies.
No problem. I move to approve an additional $10,000 funding for the 2020 Montrose Bucks Program. I'll second that.
I second it.
Great, we have a first and a second, and let's do a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Next on our agenda item is number 10, Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Application. This is council consideration of an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at 3410 Williams Drive, Suite 400 for Tacos and Beer Montrose LLC doing business as Tacos and Beer Montrose for consumption on the licensed premises. I will turn it over to our city attorney, Stephen Alcorn, for a full presentation.
I think I probably lost everybody's attention as soon as you said tacos and beer.
Tacos and beer.
So this is a public hearing for a new liquor license. It is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood as defined as the city are not currently being met by existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. Their permit is in order, the fees have been paid from the staff, city staff's review of the application. We see nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license notwithstanding this hearing. This council can make the decision at the end of the hearing or defer the decision for up to 30 days. So at this time, if we can bring the applicants up so we can have some discussion with them.
Need to have it unmute?
I'm asking him to unmute.
And we are officially in a hearing. I did, I have a gavel, but I didn't use it. This is the official liquor license hearing. Great, thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, sorry, the camera doesn't work.
That's okay. I think we can ask you the questions we need to ask you tonight.
Okay.
One or the other. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Hi, thanks for joining us by Zoom tonight. I'll turn it back over to our city attorney.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself to city council, please.
My name is Patricia Marquez. My husband, Adauto Jimenez, is right here next to me.
Hi.
Okay, and though your business is new, you're kind of known within the community, correct?
Correct.
And why is that? Do you have another establishment?
Yes, we, we also own Viva Mexico.
And how long have you owned that?
Almost eight years.
And you have a liquor license in that establishment, correct?
Yes.
And have you had any vodka liquor law violations?
No.
So we have some businesses in town that seem to find that troublesome. How are you able to do it for eight years and not have any violations?
Well, we train our staff to ID, you know, almost everybody that doesn't look, actually, over 30. We ID everybody.
I do note that when I've been there, you've, you've carded my wife, but not me. I will try to do that personally.
I'm sorry, next time I will ID you.
So based on that experience, do you feel that you are familiar with the liquor laws of the state of Colorado?
Yes.
And are you willing to make a commitment that you will run your new business with the, with the same attention to the liquor laws that you do Viva Mexico?
Yes, 100%.
You're familiar with our, the classes that the city clerk here puts on on liquor enforcement and alcohol server training?
Yes.
And do your employees utilize that?
No, I think the meeting that was, it was, it was during COVID, so it was canceled, I believe.
And will you be, and the clerk says that's true and we understand that. And there are some online tips classes. But will you commit to council that you will take advantage of these alcohol server classes as they become available?
Yes, we will.
So one of the things we have to do is establish that there is a need for your business. And one of the ways that is done is a petition. So I note in the application packet, you provided a petition with 100 signatures. 20 signatures were determined to be insufficient, like for instance, 15 were out of city limits. However, 80 signatures were determined to be valid, be valid and in support. People speak very highly of the two of you. And we also had one email sent in that was in support that council received. So these are the standard questions that I've asked, or that I asked. So I'll turn this back over to council and they can ask whatever questions they have and then have public comment for it again.
Great, thank you very much. Counselors, do you need, have any questions for the applicants?
I have none.
Fine.
I think it would be beneficial to clarify the location of 3410 Williams Drive, Suite 400, where that is relative to geography of Montrose.
Sure, where's, where's this new restaurant gonna be? Can you describe it to us?
It's located next to Applebee's where the old Mountain Country Cafe used to be.
Great, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I think I got thrown off game because usually I ask the applicants, especially the new one, give them a little bit of an opportunity to tell council what the, their plan for the restaurant is, what it's gonna look like as far as service. And also it gives them a little bit of a chance to plug their new business.
Sure, let's, let's have them tell us a little bit about their business and what they're like, what, what it's gonna look like. That'd be great to hear.
We'll be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We hope to be here for a long time, fully staffed and servers. Hoping to employ about maybe 15 people. We're looking forward to open up as soon as we can.
Great. And are you gonna have, despite the name of Tacos and Beer, would it be safe to say, because sometimes a breakfast, that is what I want. Would it be safe to say that you're also offering some other menu items and some other drinks?
Yes, we have a full, full menu of Mexican food after, you know, we have Mexican breakfast also and traditional American breakfasts.
Fantastic.
If you're gonna have chile kilas for breakfast, I will be there.
Yes, we are.
It's always exciting when a business chooses to expand and really believes in our community to support them. So congratulations to you on that. Does council have any other questions? To the applicants, is there anything else that you would like city council to know about you or your business?
Happy hour. Happy hour from 2:00 to 6:00, seven days a week.
Great. Do we have any testimony tonight in support of the applicant? Has anyone joining us for comment? Or in opposition, is what I'm gonna ask next. Okay, and I think we've addressed questions, but I'll make sure, I'll circle back. Does city staff or city council have any further questions about this liquor license application? Okay, then it looks like I can close the hearing. And now we can deliberate and consider what we've heard and make a decision.
I'm not really excited to see a restaurant not only thriving in Montrose, but expanding. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us.
Madam Mayor?
Absolutely. Hi, Counselor Anderson.
I just wanted to commend them on their wonderful record so far. Eight years with no, no kind of liquor violations at all. And I know that we're all sensitive about underage drinking. So I just want to encourage them to keep up the great work. And I look forward to visiting it soon, as soon as they open. So anyway, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no further questions, then we could consider a motion to approve.
Motion, I'll make a motion to approve the new hotel, restaurant, liquor license at 3410 Williams Drive, Suite 400 for Taco and Beer Montrose LLC doing business as Taco and Beer Montrose for consumption on the licensed premise.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second. So will you call the vote?
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on on our agenda tonight to item 11, Resolution 2020-17. This is council consideration of a resolution granting a franchise to Delta Montrose Electric Association in the November 2020 general election. I will turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Anna Morgan-Bauer.
To Madam Mayor, I should probably close myself for this.
Okay, thank you. I remember that you did that when we read it the first time around.
Yep.
Because Mr. Bowman is involved with a local nonprofit that is, gets sponsorships from DMEA. And so he has chosen to refuse himself based on that. Okay, wanna review this for us and what we're exactly voting on?
Yes, I'm happy to. And first, I'd like to introduce our guests. If you look on the TV screen, you'll see Ms. Harmon. But actually, there are three people in the room with her. So there, Virginia Harmon is there, Jeff Hurd, and also Jim Henigan are in one office together there from DMEA here to answer questions. Also, Jason Bronick is here, if you have questions. And Kyle Martinez, who is the board VP for DMEA, is here as well. So welcome to our guests. We reviewed this item at a work session with you in detail. And tonight, you are considering a resolution to approve all of the language in the proposed franchise agreement, which is a 20-year agreement between the city and DMEA. This franchise agreement does need to be approved by the voters of the City of Montrose in order to go into effect. And so tonight, you're considering the entire franchise agreement in order to present it to the voters. And at the very bottom of your memo and at the last page of the franchise agreement is the ballot language that is proposed to go on the ballot. And councilperson Anderson asked me about this at the work session and I incorrectly answered and said that it would be the ordinance language of the header of the ordinance. And I'm sorry, but that wasn't correct. So I included the language here at the bottom of the memo under a heading ballot language. And so that's what voters will see. Of course, they can access the entirety of the proposed franchise agreement if they would like to. And then they'll vote for the measure or against the measure. In the memo, I outlined the same items that seem to be the largest items that changed in the franchise agreement. But again, they're mostly administrative. And in order to bring this franchise agreement into sort of modern franchise agreement world here, no large changes. And we just think the DMEA- And we just thank the DMEA staff and partners for working with us on this franchise agreement.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you to our guests who are joining us tonight from DMEA to answer any questions that city council might have about this item. So I'll look to my fellow counselors, any questions?
Oh, I think we had a great opportunity in our work session to cover this. And I believe that they answered all the questions that I had.
I know that a lot of work has gone into this and I wanna thank everyone, both on the city staff side, the independent counsel the city retained as well, and DMEA for all their hard work and our legal staff. I know everyone worked really hard on this, so thank you for that. If there is nothing else, I will call for public comment on this resolution. Do we have anyone from the public commissions to speak?
I am not seeing anything, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we're not seeing anyone in the Zoom room waving their hand. So if that's the case, I will ask a fellow counselor to make a motion.
I'm going to approve or make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-one-seven as presented.
I second it.
Okay, great, you've got a motion and a second. And so I will ask our city clerk to take the vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glasper?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
We invite him, we have one abstention and four votes in paper.
Great, thank you very much. And again, thank you, DMEA, for joining us at our meeting tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I should have said this earlier, but the board at Delta Montrose just wants to thank your staff, Mr. Alcorn and the rest of the staff that worked on this, as well as the city council for our continued partnership. And we look forward to working with you guys. Upon approval, the voters for another twenty years. Delta Montrose has been working hard to stabilize our rates. And we hope that this partnership continues and continues to be a strong one. So thank you all, and we certainly appreciate the hard work that goes into these things. And so we're very grateful for your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is item twelve, an intergovernmental agreement. This is counsel consideration of IGA between Montrose County and the city of Montrose for the twenty-twenty general election. And I will ask our city attorney, Stephen Alcorn, to present the full information.
Okay, this IGA is pretty much making the sausage. So what we just saw was the end product, what we want the voters to get to. Now we have to have an agreement between our city clerk, the city government, and then the county because the county will be actually running the election. So we do this every time we have either a franchise agreement that has to be approved, which happens twice this in the last couple of years. But then hopefully we won't have to do it for twenty more years. But this is the same document that got each of you elected at your elections. So it lays out all the responsibilities of both sides and makes clear that everyone understands what's expected of each party, as well as laying out the timeline that we're going to follow. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions for how this works between the coordination of the city and the county on the ballot?
Just for clarification from the public, this is pretty much boilerplate, very, very standard. Nothing unusual or abnormal about this document at all.
A question or a statement? Looks like you were waiting for someone to agree.
I don't. I'm sorry, I thought it was a
It's pretty much a declaratory statement. This is just standard stuff.
Yeah, I hate to hear what Lisa and I, you know, live for. It's nothing special, nothing out of the usual, but we won't take offense. But you're right, it's routine.
Great. Thank you.
Legally, legally, we have to do this at every election, as I understand it, right, Stephen?
Yes.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't coordinate with the county on it. Well, we would actually, because the county sends out our ballots for us, so.
And each time we have an item on the local election, this item on the election would do this.
You know, and I really do appreciate the county doing that. There have been some counties in Colorado recently who have made the news by saying we can no longer help you out and you're on your own. And I know that would be really tough and it would cost our taxpayers more money. And so I do appreciate that we, in a way, take it for granted, but that the county of Montrose does work with us and does coordinate and allows us to hold elections for our community at the lowest possible cost to taxpayers. So thank you to Montrose County and the clerk over there. All right, okay, I think we do need formal motions. Well, public comment. Any public comment on the IGA between the city and the county?
I am seeing none.
Okay, great, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Montrose County and the city of Montrose for the twenty-twenty general election as presented.
Great, we have a first and a second. Let's have a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glasper?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
We invite him, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is item thirteen, which is English Gardens Four subdivision filing number five, final plat. This is counsel consideration of the English Gardens Four subdivision filing number five final plat. And I will turn it over to Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So the following is the final plat schedule. On August third, we had the council work session overview for this project. And then tonight, the city council will be considering approval of this final plat application. So this land is located north of Niagara Road. It's south of Sunnyside Road and west of Sixty-Sixth Road, and then east of Hillcrest Road, as shown by this orange kind of update thing here. The English Gardens Four subdivision filing number five final plat proposes to create thirty new residential lots and dedicate right-of-ways and/or easements in this location. The newly created lots will be seventeen through thirty-three, forty-three through fifty-two, and seventy-eight through eighty, all of which are accessed via Hickory Street. This property is approximately ten point five eight acres in size, as shown by that yellow outline, and it's currently zoned R-two low-density district. So our staff analysis and the requirements for a final plat are the following. All lots must meet the minimum lot size, which is seventy-five hundred square feet required in the R-two zone, which they do meet that size. The streets, all surrounding streets must be in place, inspected, and approved by the city engineer prior to final approval. And improvements will receive a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion. With my portion of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Scott to speak to the infrastructure improvements. And then for the utilities, the easements must be shown in all city water mains. Sewer and other utilities must also be installed and available to serve all lots prior to final approval. This plat shows the subdivision and all the lots that will be created by this final plat. If you can see my arrow, it's the ones across the most northern section and then eastern section, and then just across the street from there. So the approval of this final plat is expressly conditioned upon the city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. That's all I have for my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Other questions or comments from any counselors present or online? Okay, then I would accept public comment on this item. If there's any public comment, anyone who wishes to comment?
Seeing.
Not seeing anyone? Okay, then I would consider a motion.
I move to approve the English Gardens Four subdivision filing number five final plat, expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. City staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second, so I will ask for a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glasper?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
We invite him, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to item fourteen, staff reports. Number, letter A, sales, use, and excise tax report. I will turn it over to the city finance director, Shani Wittenberg, for that presentation. Shani with us tonight?
I don't see her.
I am, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
Took me a minute to find my own mute button, sorry. So let me share my screen with you. And get to the beginning of it. Do you all see that? Do you see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, so this is a sales, use, and excise tax collection report for June of twenty-twenty. So halfway through the year, general fund sales and use taxes collected at three percent. June sales tax collected versus June of two thousand nineteen, retail sales taxes at five point eight percent. Construction use tax continues to be down sixty-eight point six percent. Use and auto use tax up twenty-one point nine percent. And total collections at five point three percent with a positive budget variance of seven point six percent. Retail sales tax year-to-date is up three point nine percent or three hundred thousand dollars. Construction use tax is down one point eight percent or four thousand dollars. With auto use tax down eleven point six percent or sixty-eight thousand dollars. Total collections up two point seven percent or approximately two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The budget variance of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Public safety sales and use tax. In November, the voters approved the point five eight percent to be added to our sales tax. And in June, we collected three hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars with a positive budget variance year-to-date of six percent. Montrose Recreation District, in two thousand and fourteen, the voters approved a point three percent increase to our sales tax. In June, we collected a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, or six point four percent more than we did in two thousand and nineteen. Year-to-date collections for MRD are at two point eight percent. Excise tax is added to the sales tax. Hotel excise tax is point nine percent, restaurant excise tax is point eight percent, which, as I've said before, those are pretty low compared to other communities. June compared to June, oh, sorry about that, that should say two thousand and nineteen. Hotel excise tax is down forty-six point four percent. Restaurant is down eleven point six percent with total collections down twenty point two percent. This is where COVID has hit us hard, is in our excise taxes. Budget variance is negative seventeen point seven percent. Year-to-date collections, hotel excise tax is down thirty-six point four percent or seventeen thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax is down eight percent or eighteen thousand dollars, with total excise tax down thirteen percent or approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. A negative budget variance of ten percent or twenty-six thousand dollars. One positive is that when COVID hit, our OBT staff switched gears and did a lot of the COVID advertising and business, helping out with the businesses and that type of thing. So we'll recover some of our downturn through the CARES Act. Retail sales enhancement. In nineteen ninety, vendors agreed to give up a portion of their fee for the city to promote sales tax in Montrose. In two thousand and twenty, RSC collections in June was forty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars, or an increase of twenty-four point nine percent compared to two thousand and nineteen. Keep in mind that the rate of collections is higher due to the public safety sales tax. So that's why that seems like a large amount. There's a larger amount they collected, so then their one point three percent is collected is calculated higher. Year-to-date collections up twenty-one point eight percent. And with that, I'll take any questions you all may have.
Any questions about the sales, use, and excise tax report? Great, then let's move on to the second quarter budget review.
Give me just a second here. So this is a, this is in your packets. I don't usually do a presentation on this. But just a quick on the memo part, with, you know, fifty percent of the year complete, we're actually collecting general fund revenues of fifty-two point three percent. And we've spent fifty-seven point three percent in the general fund. Sales and use tax comprise more than eighty percent of the total revenue that the general fund receives. Keep in mind, we don't receive any property taxes. In twenty, compared to two thousand and nineteen, our retail sales tax and total sales and use tax is at three point nine percent and two point seven percent respectively. Then I go on to list some of our capital projects, which I think are mostly in play right now. We've got the new public safety building, we're moving forward on that. Trail improvements, Woodgate Road alignment, I think that one is also in progress. And then general sidewalk replacement and ADA program. Our, some of our other major funds are the water fund, which is in, their collections year-to-date are sixty-two point nine percent, with their expenses at fifty-nine point nine percent. I think that's largely due to the dryness of our summer. We've been pretty hot, so I think people are using more water. The sewer fund has collected sixty-two percent of their revenues and spent thirty-six point three percent of the revenues. That's mainly as far as the capital projects go, in that we're lagging a little bit on completing those. And then trash and recycle, sixty percent of their revenues have been collected with fifty-three point eight percent of their expenses expended. Then the golf course, sixty-two point four percent of their revenues have been received and fifty-six point five percent of their expenses have been expended. If you remember, the golf course was one of those outdoor recreation that went during COVID. So I think we benefited from that quite a bit. And with that, I'll take any questions you all may have.
Thank you. It does not look like any counselors have any questions about the second quarter budget review. If citizens have questions, are you available as email or phone better or?
Either one is fine.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks for joining us. I don't think we have any more finance, right? Is everyone good on finance? We have those two things, okay. Okay, then letter C, under staff reports, is the public information report. And I will turn it over to our city manager, Bill Bell.
I don't have a lot, other than to maybe give a bit of a comment on the overall economy in Montrose. We get a lot of questions related to the COVID impacts. And I think the report we just saw shows that the diversified economy we have in Montrose is really good. And just to remind everyone the importance of having a diversified approach to retail. Some small businesses, some large big bucks stores, and some industry, commercial activity and residential all combines to make a healthy community, and we are one of those in Colorado. So I'm just proud of the conservative approach we use for finance. Shani does a wonderful job as finance director and our department heads are frugal with the money that they're provided. And not all organizations can say that. So I'm just thankful to be in this organization and want to let the public know that we are as concerned about the overall impact on our economy as you are. And we're working really hard to conserve our resources. So as we move forward during times of uncertainty, the next six to nine months is really uncertain to all of us. We're trying to make sure that we are a bit more conservative than we have been in the past. But at the same time, move projects forward. And development activity in our community is going really And development activity in our community is going really strong right now. Construction activity is booming. And we'll be seeing on future council agendas, work sessions and URA board meetings and council meetings. We'll see a lot of proposals on development activity, whether it's constructing housing that we know we need in the community. We saw some daycare projects recently. We're going to be seeing some new business ventures and business activity all come before the city council for discussion and consideration. So, I would encourage anybody who's interested in that type of stuff to watch the meetings and share their thoughts, suggestions, concerns with the city council or just call Ann and I up and talk to us about it. If you have questions or things you've heard out on the street, if you have positive ideas on those things, or if you have some criticisms where you want to share what you're worried about and ask how we're planning for the future and see how we're looking at things from a conservative approach. We would really welcome those phone calls. It's hard for us when we see comments or hear about comments out in the community, but we never really have the opportunity to talk to you about your concerns. So, we really do want to put that invitation out there. I had somebody recently ask if the city was ever going to start back up things like mingle with the manager or coffee with the council. And I was able to tell them that actually, our city council has talked about that. And as soon as we're able to meet in person again, that we're going to be scheduling some of those social hours prior to council meetings. And I think it's important to spread the word about that. Just unfortunate with COVID that we can't do that in in-person setting, which is much easier than virtually, because you can have just friendly dialogue with people rather than be in a formal virtual meeting where it's hard to get everybody's voice heard. So, just want to encourage people to call us and keep giving us suggestions and those types of things. We're pretty far along in the budget process for next year. We just had four full days last week with the department heads. And then, the last two days, several of us looking at all of the proposed budgets from the departments and seeing how that stacks up with the revenues that we're projecting for next year. We're going to project an even more conservative revenue than we normally do and normally very conservative, so we're taking that approach. So, there were a few things we're, we're looking at, maybe delaying another year, different types of projects. But we would also encourage anybody in the community who has ideas on capital projects or just major issues that they're, they're seeing out and about. Let us know those things, so it helps us in the prioritization when we move things forward and meet the city council for an all-day budget retreat. Always put it out there, we would love to have you sit on our citizen budget advisory committee and our parks advisory committee, golf course advisory committee. And then, it's great to see planning commission applications coming in and that type of thing. So, a lot of room to get involved with your community in a face-to-face way and really a personal way. So, please reach out to us.
Bill, isn't our all-day budget meeting that we have coming up for the council, that's only for people to sit in?
Yeah, that's a public meeting, September tenth, I think, off the top of my head, let me just make sure. Yeah, all day on September tenth. And we allow the public to come and sit in. It's not an open back-and-forth dialogue. It's, it's the departments presenting the line item budget to the city council. And the city council, we go through the entire budget, not a summary, but the entire budget. So, we can answer any questions, we can change things based on the city council's input, new ideas that come up at that meeting. We've all talked along the way since March and April about the budget. So, usually, we don't see a lot of last-minute changes, but sometimes we do, new ideas that didn't come up before. But it's not really an engaging part for the citizens, but they can definitely watch and listen in and see how we do things and hear some of the projects. We are definitely going to have an open house for the citizens where they can come and, and share ideas and thoughts after they hear the proposed budget and give us positive or negative feedback on those things, like we always do. We always try to have a citizen budget open house.
Hey, Bill, I, I think it's really worth highlighting the fact that we're very transparent. This process, I mean, the public's invited. And I believe all that information will be on the web for anyone who can't actually come to the meeting. They can still review it. And then, during the open house, you know, they have an opportunity to, to comment on things that they're concerned about.
Yes, we put all of that on the internet and we'll always print off a copy too. If somebody doesn't have access, just come by City Hall and we'll... It's a pretty lengthy document, but on a limited basis, we'll make those copies available. We try to do it electronically or on the website, just because it's such a large document.
Just for clarification to the public, we are financially doing very well compared to a number of different communities across Colorado. And as a result of that, we are not having to cancel a lot of our capital projects. We may be reevaluating the start time of some of them. But we're still going to plan on moving ahead on those projects because of our financials.
Yes, that's important, an important message to get out to people because they do see things nationwide or around the state of Colorado. Every community is in a different situation financially. It's important to know that we have the ability to keep moving forward. We have healthy fund balances in, in almost all of our funds. Actually, I have healthy fund balances in all of our funds. But trash and recycling, for instance, isn't as healthy as we would like because we're having to keep up with the growth into our community and want to make sure that we can still provide a top-notch service for trash and recycling. And so, during the budget presentation, we'll talk about recycling costs and the need for another route in our community to make sure that we can continue to pick people up in a timely fashion. But otherwise, we're doing very well.
Thank you.
Great, any other comments or questions by city council for Bill? Okay. Are there additional staff reports that any departments feel like they need to update city council on anything? There are none that I'm aware of, but this is a great time if there's something I wasn't aware of for a department head. Okay, great. How about my fellow city councillors? Does anyone have anything they want to share?
I don't have anything. Actually, I'd like to make a comment that my, of my short time that I've been on city council, but it's been an educational process learning about the amount of work that staff puts in bringing these issues forward to city council. It's like watching a fleet of ducks on the pond, all of its calm and serene. And like Stephen mentioned, we look at it and say, "Oh, just business as usual." But it's really important for the public to know that there is an incredible amount of work being done and a lot of information being processed by city staff before it ever comes to us. And I just want to say thank you to all of our staff because the amount of work you guys put in to present us like finished sausage, as it were, is really appreciated, very, very well done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, let's see, I'm not muted. Okay. So, I just wanted to kind of make a point that Bill mentioned about our diverse economy. There's a beautiful new gas station that just opened this weekend on Ogden and South Townsend for those people who maybe haven't driven down south. And I was amazed at how busy it was when I went by. I, I went to Home Depot and the place was packed. So, it's encouraging and, and another example of our economy growing, I think, so. That's all.
With that growth comes a little bit of pressure and a little bit of stress. I think we've all seen not only the increased traffic from regular summer tourism, but perhaps an increased amount of people driving for their summer vacations. And then, compound that with the fact that I-70 is closed and will remain closed and the C-Dot detour is through Montrose. And so, we are experiencing unusual levels of traffic. We have talked about it internally, staff is aware, police department is aware. They put up additional signage to help drivers. But it is part of a larger conversation. I think just about every year, we have some kind of road construction on the capital projects list where we're trying to make traffic work better for folks in this community who live here, who work here, recognizing that we are at the intersection of two state highways. And with that comes that level of, of pressure. So, I ask everyone to take a deep breath, remain calm, it's all okay. It'll be quiet before you know it, and we're all, we're all working on it together. So, we can celebrate our economy, but also, we have to recognize that sometimes we also need to be a little patient with our booming economy. Okay, is there any other comments from fellow councillors tonight? Well, I'll echo your comments. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on behalf of the city. I know this has felt like the longest summer in history, couldn't have started in March. And everyone has been working really hard and it's really hot everywhere also, which I think is, is at least controls my patience. So, anyway, I guess maybe I'm telling myself I need to just... But thank you, everyone, for being here and for working hard. Thanks for everyone who is able to join us via Zoom or you're watching this later. I know it's an awkward way to have a city council meeting. I wish that there were a bunch of you in this room. I wish we would have had the opportunity to mingle with you beforehand. I miss that contact and that face-to-face interaction. But I know that I and my fellow councillors are all available to the citizens. If you want to send us an email or you want to pick up the phone and call us, all of our contact information is available on the city's website or you can call City Hall and ask for it. And until we're able to, to really meet and gather in person safely, this is really what we're going to make work. And I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding on this format. So, we're always open to suggestions too, if you have a way to improve it. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Fantastic, let's do it. The traffic coming home on fifty was pretty bad.